All right, good evening. I'm gonna call the September twenty fifth, twenty twenty four meeting of Lacey Planning Commission order. Roll call. Looks like we got everybody here tonight. That's awesome.
Missing Eddie.
Yeah, we are.
And we have, is Spencer online?
Eddie and Spencer is online.
You promote, yeah, there's Spencer, let's promote him to field.
All right, Spencer, so Eddie is the only one of us that's missing tonight. Kirian, would you please read the land acknowledgement?
We, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and Squawks Island Tribe. We acknowledge and remember those tribal people not recognized today who are absorbed and relocated into other tribes for survival. We recognize ancestors and their descendants who are still here. We recognize and respect the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek as a traditional stewards of this land since time immemorial and their role today in taking care of these lands in perpetuity. We recognize and have the responsibility to call attention to the histories of dispossession, forced removal, and abridged treaty rights that allowed our nation, state, and city to develop as they have today. We recommend that community members read the Medicine Creek Treaty of eighteen fifty-four.
Thank you very much. So I would look for a motion on the agenda.
Need to approve the agenda.
Second.
Scale and Daphne. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Awesome. Thumbs up, Spencer? Awesome. Okay, did everybody have a chance to look at the September eleventh minutes? So I'd be looking for a motion on that.
Move to approve?
My second.
Kirian and Antonia. All those in favor?
Aye.
Post. Awesome. So before we get started here, I do want to talk about some changes in format to the meetings. You've noticed last two meetings, meetings I've been sitting here between Erin and Ryan. Erin has been promoted to basically clerk of the commission. She's the official note taker and she'll warn us when we get offline. So one thing that's happened with the we're publicly streaming all of these meetings live now. And so has most local government, and that has increased public scrutiny on government and then other events in general have just had the public paying more attention to the operation of government. And the planning commission has always been a very, very casual, casually operating commission. It was kind of set up that way by the council. But we're finding a need now to try and be a little bit more formal, not as formal as a council meeting, but a little bit more formal in operation. And so what we've done is the chair will sit here next to Ryan and Erin. Seating for all of you is at will, just wherever you want to sit, grab your name tag, there's, there's no seating chart. What we're gonna do, you know, is the public comment, there's gonna be a timer, although I understand it's not available tonight, but Erin will be our timekeeper for public comment. There will be a timer at future meetings, and that's gonna be across all of the Lacey Commissions and Council. Speakers will be limited to three minutes. At the three minute mark, I will say, you know, one or two more sentences, please, and complete your remarks. We want everybody to have a voice. That is very important. I want, I want everybody to feel like they've been heard. So when we have presentations, every so often that will bring up questions, will bring up comments on your part. And what we're gonna do is we're gonna let the presentation finish. Please keep in mind your questions, write them down if you have to. And I'm gonna go round robin. I'm, I'm gonna start on my left here and go clockwise and ask each of you if you have a comment or a question. If you don't, don't feel bad. If you do, great. Please, one question, one comment, and then we'll move on to the next person. Then at that point, raise your hand, signal whatever you can to indicate that you have another question or another comment. And I will take you in order as I see you. Ryan's gonna help me spot. And then we'll have these discussions. Please do not be afraid to use your voice. That is why we're all here. We are here to make this city better. This is not meant to stifle, it's just meant to bring a little bit more order. Help the public follow our procedures a little bit more, follow our discussions a little bit more. Like I said, with increased public scrutiny on government, it is really important that we present a professional appearance. The other thing that's driving some of these changes, obviously around the country, you've read reports where some of the members, some bad actors in the public have hijacked the public comment periods at public meetings, and we are trying to control that as best we can. People participating online for public comment have, up until two hours before the meeting, to sign in. People within the audience, we're gonna ask them, we're gonna ask everybody, please identify yourself, state where you live, or your connection to the city of Lacey, and then once your comments start, then, then you'll have your three minutes. Do you have anything to add to that?
The only other thing is, we do have the addition of the lectern now, so anybody that's in the room will be coming up to the lectern and, and the speaker is up here in the ceiling, or the, the microphone is up here in the, in the ceiling, so anybody that's projecting this way will be captured on the, on that microphone. Instead of, in the past, we've allowed people to sit at the table or stand by the table, so that'll hopefully formalize that a little bit. But yeah, I think that's the only other thing I can think of.
Okay, and so instead of going round robin, I'm just gonna ask, does anybody have any questions? Awesome. So we've reached the public comment period. Do you intend to make a comment tonight? Okay, well, welcome. We always appreciate an audience. Okay, Commissioner Merd reports. Kirian?
Um, nothing to report, thank you.
Okay, yep.
Just said I watched the city council meeting and that if anybody hasn't seen the deputy mayor's comments on DEI, I would recommend them to everybody. They were quite succinct, but very to the point.
Okay, Elliot? Okay, Daphne?
I am part of the Parks Improvement Funding Work Group, and it's a real privilege to be part of that. It is, we are concurrently every other Monday, meeting up through most of December, and basically, we will be providing input on where the park funding goes for varying projects. The first couple of meetings, one was just about rules of order and kind of all that sort of thing, and then the last meeting we had, we had a great presentation from Public Works, talking about their connection to the parks, and then some listing of the parks' things that are going on. I'm actually a non-voting member, which I wasn't aware of, because obviously I can only vote for one, but impressive group of people. It is outstanding. The citizens, the community that are participating, their credentials, the reasons they're there, what they can bring to the table, it's I was just overwhelmed by the, the talent in the room, or the, the history and what they had, so it's, it's a very impressive group of the public. So we haven't got anywhere, but we hope to be making recommendations that'll ultimately go to the council sometime, presumably in December, just depending on how things fare. Lots of things are on the table, splash parks, indoor facilities, outdoor facilities, improvement of current facilities, you know, development of other non, ones that haven't been started at all, so it's gonna be a really good community.
Good, well, thank you for serving.
Yeah, it's interesting.
Judy?
Nothing tonight.
Any?
Nothing, thank you.
Spencer? Okay, all right. Oh, one last thing I wanted to say, add to. At the end of the meeting, so one of the things that Alyssa presented last week was the aspect of serial meetings under the OPMA. And that is where a majority of us are talking. And we can't have a majority of us talking about any commission business, because that becomes an official meeting that is operating outside of OPMA, and that's bad. But the other thing is perception, and so I know a lot of us are friends, but you know, after the meeting, hanging out after the meeting, we've gotta be very, very careful if three or four of us are talking in a group, that the public perception is not that those three or four members are talking about official business, and it's hard to prove a negative, so let's just make sure we're pretty careful about that.
And that's what the Commissioner Members Report section of the meeting is for, is to, to share stuff. It's, it's the, anything you got on your mind, what, maybe things you wanna get a presentation from staff on in the future, things you want to discuss, those kinds of things, that's what that Commissioner Members Report section is for. The danger becomes, not so much when we have small groups talking, but as, as soon as we have a fifth member of the planning commission that's involved, so if we have, yeah, if we have two or three, and then that, those two or three talk to two more people, then all of a sudden, that becomes that kind of serial meeting, right? So that's, that's the concern. So just be aware that that's a possibility. And again, there's a lot of scrutiny on, on all, you know, boards and commissions at this point, and so we just wanna make sure that, you know, that's not happening, and use that Commissioner Member Reports as the vehicle to be able to have those discussions.
Yeah, I just wanna say, sometimes being a public official is a pain in the butt. Okay, department reports.
Uh, yeah, a couple items here that I wanted to bring up. First is that we're going to have another booth at a public event related to our comprehensive plan update, so that's gonna be Saturday, October fifth. It's a Children's Day event at Huntermore Park. That's eleven in the morning till two PM in the afternoon, so it's a real short and sweet kind of session, so if you're able to make it, we would highly recommend you be able to attend, at least to maybe get some feedback and talk to some of your friends and neighbors. It's a, it's a really Lacey-focused event as well. A lot of local organizations and stuff that are promoting, you know, youth involvement, those kinds of things, so sports and all kinds of different, um, community-sponsored activities are, are there representing themselves, and so it's a really Lacey-focused event, and it's a really good one to attend if you're able to, and we'd welcome you to, to help staff the booth with, with us, even if it's for a few minutes that day. So Saturday, October fifth, from eleven to two at Huntermore Park. The other thing I want to mention is that I sent you all an email the last couple days around some the short course on local planning that's put on by the State Department of Commerce. I think some people have taken this in the, in the past. And right now, unfortunately, it looks like any of the in-person options for this class are kind of like, I was looking, there's a couple, one in Bellevue and one in Wenatchee, so there's not anything really too, too close by here in the near future, but there are a lot of opportunities for Zoom-based sessions, and I would recommend that on your own time, if you're able to attend one of those courses, I think, yeah, some of it will be a refresher, especially around the Open Public Meetings Act, the Public Records Act, and that kind of stuff, but really it would be a good primer as we move into our comprehensive plan, as far as like, what is a comprehensive plan, and, you know, what is your role as a planning commissioner and all those things, those are really good introductory type sessions. I think each class is about three hours, so I recommend if you have the opportunity to do that, to register and attend one of those.
Elliot?
The link you sent me didn't work. Did anybody else experience?
No, I got an error for four.
So I think that's the whole Department of Commerce website right now, so I tried to get on there today for a different reason. Let me check that link. I think it's the entire state, that State Department of Commerce that puts on that, their, their whole site is down. So let me double-check that, and then I'll get back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
All right, Spencer? Okay, we, thank you.
Yep.
We have no public hearing. New business. My old friend Tom. Yeah. Sorry.
Do you want the mouse? I have your word, it's the word documents down there, are your, if you want to just.
So you'll need to do, Tom, while Tom's doing that, go ahead and share on the bottom, and then you'll have to share screen, so we can see it on the screen. It's, it's a Word document. So while Tom is doing that, just introduce real quick, we have Tom Stiles. Tom is the Development Review Engineer Manager for the city. And then we have Joey Edder, who is a Development Review Engineer. Correct, not the, not the manager. So both here representing our Public Works Department, so the purpose of, of Tom and Joey being here tonight is to begin the discussion and briefing and review of the update to our development guidelines, what has been known as our development guidelines and public work standards now, just public work standards. So these are the things, the standards that kind of govern our infrastructure. When you're doing a private development project, typically, these are things that go kind of below the ground, things like pipes, water, sewer, stormwater, they can be above the ground, things like some of our transportation improvements and that kind of stuff. So we've gone through a robust process to come up with all these changes in-house, so the staff has reviewed these through, with our operations department and those kinds of things, but these, these is such a big document that will be bringing you these in pieces. And so this is, tonight is a real brief overview of the Public Work Standards, the, the chapter three, the Public Works Considerations. And then what we'll do is we will bring back sections of this document, section by section, to you throughout the rest of this year, and then ultimately, you will be making, holding a public hearing on this, and then on these amendments, and then making a recommendation on them to the city council. Probably hearing the recommendation probably actually after the first of the year. So, yeah, with that, Tom, did I just totally give your presentation away?
Yeah.
No, so the last time we were here was probably eight years ago, so the last version was a two thousand seventeen Development Guidelines, and the previous city manager wanted us to, when we did updates to the guidelines, make sure that they were in place long enough to show that they were working or not working. And so he said, you can't bring it back for another five years, and so it was a little bit longer than that, so it's been about eight years since we've done any updates to it. Some of the sections are, they're not really touched much at all, like, we won't get into chapter eight at all, that's the reclaim water section. There really wasn't any changes, because we don't even have a reclaimed water comprehensive plan yet. So we had a few developments in, you know, the early two thousands that we were talking about reclaim water, so we wrote the standards, but not a lot of pipe has gone in the ground yet for that. There's a few places, but we've got some trunk lines in, so that when we did major road projects, that we wouldn't have to dig up the road there, but onsite, like, private development hasn't done much of it, so. So as Ryan said, what, what the plan is, is each month, we're gonna bring you a section, and down here, we, we listed the section, so chapter one's planning issues, chapter two's grading, three is public works considerations, transportation, stormwater, water, sewer, reclaimed water. Again, we won't have a presentation on reclaimed water, and then your natural question's gonna be, well, why aren't we starting with planning issues? So the planning issues and the grading issues are gonna be coming out of the guidelines, so currently, the name of the document is the Development Guidelines and Public Work Standards. Okay, we're taking, and when it was originally written, it was a, a document that, and the book's like this big. It was a, a document that you could get it, and if you didn't know anything about developing Lacey, it would tell you how to go through the process, the planning process, public works, everything, and also what those standards were. And now we're looking at saying, well, this document shouldn't, a, a lot of the, the planning stuff is already in the LMC, Lacey Municipal Code, or it's going to live in the Lacey Municipal Code, so that's why chapter one's coming out, you know. Ryan has in, in the past brought that through separately to make all the changes to that, because it is very code, code-like, you know. The rest of this is more discussion-like, you know, with also giving you the specifics that you need for development, so. Grading, same thing, it's, it's gonna live in the Lacey Municipal Code, and so we get into the rest of the chapters. This one, Public Works Considerations is September, transportation, October, stormwater, November, water be December, and then January be sewer, then we'll go into the public hearing hopefully in February. That's the thought process, so.
And I just wanted to bring, rewind just a little bit, Tom, on what you said on chapter one, the planning issues, so a lot of this that will be taken out of the development guidelines, you will be briefed on at a future briefing, so there are some updates that, around some legislative requirements through Senate Bill fifty-two ninety that are on your agenda for next meeting, that a lot of the, the development standards related to planning that are in that chapter one are going to be pulled into the Lacey Municipal Code through that, so you will be seeing that at the next meeting.
So we'll just keep on going? Do we ask along the way if there's, is it still informal enough that people have questions? I don't mind questions along the way, or do we?
I think everybody can form their questions as we go, and I'll just let you get through it, because there's always that possibility, probability, that you'll answer their question.
Okay.
Or severe.
Okay. So going into chapter three, and then I'll actually take you to the document, we'll scroll through it really fast, hopefully. But the, the main changes to this one were, we have a memorandum of understanding of how development is to occur in our urban growth area, and we had it in this document, but it also lives in other places, so part of that is, it's, we need to have further discussions with the county on, you know, what that looks like today. So we had a discussion internally and decided that that language probably shouldn't be living in the guidelines, so it's just coming out. We have a Development Review Checklist, so when plans come in, all the specifics on what we need on civil drawings are in this checklist. So we've made a few revisions to it, really not too many. When we get there, I'll show you what the main ones are. We've had some, we've added some language on when you submit plans. Currently, what happens, plans come in, and we do not collect any money upfront. We just say, we're gonna collect it at the end. Well, over the years, development has changed a bit, and we've had projects that have gone all the way through the process, and they've never collected, so they paid for the civil engineers' time to, to design the drawings, they paid for them to revise the drawings, and then at the end, they never pick them up. So all the work we've done just goes out the window. So we, we don't have the specifics on how much it's going to be, but we are adding language in there to have a deposit for our plan review that will be applied to the, to the plan check and inspection fees, if you do actually, you know, move forward and pay them, and then if land use approval expires on it, then we will keep the money, you know, so, and, and land use, if it's a plat, that's like five years, and wait, I'm, I'm not a planner, so I might say something that's not exactly right, right? Usually, site plan review, I think, is like eighteen months, you know, and you can get, you can get extensions and stuff like that, but it's not like an overnight thing that you're gonna lose your money. It's like you have a, a time to develop it, so.
And that's very similar to what, the way we do building permits, so for building permits, we collect, for commercial ones especially, the, the plan check fee, the plan review fee right upfront. So if you, for some reason, the project falls through, we've at least got our time paid for. Even if you don't pick up the building permit at the end, you know, if your financing or whatever falls through, at least we're covered for our staff time to, to review, so. Yeah, very similar to what we already have in, I mean, economic development.
Yeah. And then the last thing, there'll be some examples in here of some of the other language that is gonna be living in the Lacey Municipal Code that we're taking out, that just explains how you do development. You know, so again, the new name of the, the manual will probably be the City of Lacey Public Work Standards Manual. It won't have development guidelines into it anymore, so. So I'll try to switch over to the other document. So stop share.
Yep.
And then I'm gonna share again. Go to this. Share. Okay, here we are. So real quick. This is just giving you design specifications. I'm gonna go really fast. Hopefully I don't make people sick. I'm not gonna get it all, the, the sections, these change, these sections are not changing, so if it's not changing, if you wanna get online or read the guidelines, you can do it, but these are, like, we have definitions, and we're gonna get into these are like, design standards, submitting things, how you're gonna submit all your drawings. Okay, and then this is, I think I somehow.
So do we need to view the changes, Tom?
Yes.
So I think go up to maybe review. Can you do all markup, or it's a simple markup that will drop down? Now try that, that should show.
Okay. Well, I, I'm not seeing the whatever, there we go. So maybe it just took out the changes before. I'm not seeing the Thurston County, the memorandum of understanding, that's what I'm looking for, so, anyway, we'll just I guess you can just take my word on that there, there's a part in there that the memorandum of understanding's in there, and we're taking it out. So if you see a big chunk on your version that went out, that's what that was. Going into the checklist, the means, the main things that we've changed on here is documents, so you'll see some things like, hey, we need stationing here. There's a few survey things. Talking about, hey, where does the sewer line have to be, and this is a checklist again that the engineer looks at, and it'll tell you, hey, it needs to be in this location, but if you wanna work with this ahead of time, we can talk about a different location prior to submitting your plans, because sometimes they don't work, like, usually it's six feet off centerline for a sewer line, or six feet off sewer, centerline for a water line, and so sometimes that doesn't work, so we'll, we'll work with you on okay, this is an alternate that we'll accept, so. This is, one of the things is showing, we, we just relocated this, it's, you have like, your existing septic tanks, if they're going away, with a note for them to be decommissioned or abandoned. I'm trying to get to the storm art facilities, this is a, a new one that's on there. Currently, what happens is you have these storm art facilities, and sometimes they get too close to your foundations or slopes, and so we're finding out that when we're doing plan reviews, that we're having to tell people to move them. And that's, that's a big deal, because if, once you've done your design, if, if you've got them in the wrong place, and we tell them to move them, it can unravel the whole set of plans, so we're telling them, hey, you need to show these facilities and look into our storm art manual on where they need to be located, and so we're hoping that'll get rid of that problem. Street trees. This is, this is a pretty big one, too, and when we get to the sewer and water sections, it'll probably be quite a bit of discussion. But right now, we, we have problems with street trees being located too close to any of our step systems or to our water meter boxes, and we've got loads of pictures showing how the roots go into the tanks and all that, so we have to be really careful whenever people are putting their trees on there, that they're staying away from, now, think of how big the lots are, and whenever we're, we're having this one on here, so your lot may be forty or fifty feet wide, and you have to stay ten feet away from your step stuff, which is usually on one property line, ten feet away from your water, which is on one property line, you have to stay ten feet away from driveways, and ten feet away from street lighting. So think about that. I need answers.
Um, before we move on from, from this section, I know it'll certainly come up with the sewer section. But just at, at this point, does, are planning commission members aware of what like a, a step system is? Or and or what a grinder system does when it comes to sewer? Okay, seen head nods. So just generally for those that don't know, step, 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 septic tank.
Overflow pumping system.
Yeah, acronym. So basically, my understanding of it is like, it, it's kind of like a septic tank, but you don't have a drain field. And so every once in a while, you know, the basically, and those liquids go into a, a small diameter city maintain line. And then every once in a while, a city staff comes along and asks to pump your, your tank. And just like with a, with a septic tank. And what happens is those tree roots migrate to those open areas, especially around the lids, because that's where there's a lot of nutrients and although they have water and those kinds of things, so that the tree roots like to migrate. The grinder system, basically, my understanding of that is kind of like a step system where it's a small diameter sewer pipe. But what a grinder does is it kind of chops the stuff up after it comes out of your house to get into that small line? Is that correct?
So it chops up, so with the step system, the solids stay behind and the microbes and everything, that like a septic system. And then just the effluent goes out. With a grinder, it all goes in the tank and grinds it up and it pumps it all out. So it's a slurry that doesn't stay there, you know, it just all goes at once, so. And there's, there's, uh, all the engineering behind, like some of them have more velocity rates in the pipes than the others to make sure that, you know, all that moves along down the line. So I like to get your guys' imaginations going. That's a great. It's always, wait, I can't, I can't wait till sewer. Those are favorite. So the, where I'm trying to get to is right here. So we have a lot of documents that, um, and, um, that get recorded at the county. So we have our right of way dedication deeds, we have our power of trade for annexation. Power of attorney for annexation is a document that we need that when you get utilities at the City of Lacey, if you're not in the city, then we need that document enabled to service you with those utilities. So we collect those upfront. Bill of sale is the developer would put a line of water or sewer line or streetlights in, and then they just give them over to the city. That's what the bill of sale is for. A right of way dedication is, you know, you're the, the right of way and that you're dedicating on your property. And then easements is the, the other one. What's happening right now is, um, an engineer will do their, their civil drawings and they'll, they'll get approval. And then they move on to their next set of drawings and they forget about all of these. And so it's already in the guidelines that they're supposed to be reviewed and approved prior to civil drawing approval. But it's not happening. So and our staff spends a lot of time trying to get people to give those, those documents to us because they've moved on. And so we're making it into the checklist to say, you have to have these documents at that time, so. That's it for the checklist. And then moving back to the plan review, we, I don't really have much more to discuss when we get to the, here's the deposit we talked about. So that, that's a big chunk of language. But again, it's a non-refundable deposit, collected with the middle of the civil drawing. When final plan check and inspection fees are calculated, the deposit shall be applied to these fees. If the plan check fees are not collected prior to civil drawings expire two years from the plan approval date. That's usually when the, the plans are set to expire, the deposit shall be forfeited and retained by the city, so. Then the last thing for tonight is just kind of showing some of the language that is in here that, uh, so C per review, that's something that is clearly defined in the LMC. So we're taking that out, we're taking out the land clearing permit, grading permit, building permit. All this stuff is identified something somewhere else. So we're leaving like right of access permit is a unique public works permit that we collect. So we felt like that should probably stay in here, so if somebody's looking for that. And then final plat, you know, that kind of language, so. And that is really about it for this chapter. So I wasn't sure how much time, you could probably talk too much already, so.
Go ahead, stop sharing.
We always love hearing from you, Tom. So I'm going to start with Spencer, do you have any questions or comments?
Yeah, I do. So with this document, as the planning commission, what's our intention with this? Are we to look through this with possible intent of saying, maybe this is a bonus for our community? Or maybe we should reconsider some of this language because it may have unintended consequences? What, what's our role in this or are we just being made aware of what's going on?
I mean, yes, both of those, you're being made aware, but we do welcome and we, we invite any of the changes that you guys have. Cause you, you're coming with a fresh set of eyes on, well, wait a minute, you know, this doesn't make any sense. And so that's why we bring it to you. But, um, but mainly it is, yeah, here's the changes that we're proposing. But as we go along, if you guys are looking at something, and when I, I was kind of joking, but not joking about the street trees because street trees are a big deal. I spent a lot of time with street trees. So, um, but that discussion I anticipate to be, you know, one of the meatier discussions, even though really what I just showed you is what I think we have for street trees right now. We did a major overhaul of our street trees in the past, so anyway. But yeah, any, any, uh, direction, um, any discussion you want to have, it's very, very much welcomed. So, thank you. Yeah.
Yeah, actually, my question was about street trees. I was really curious, you have great things with the water service boxes and driveways. But, um, seeing that street trees also impact power lines and foundations of new housing, is there any guidance about, or, uh, why were those things not included?
Yeah, so they are, they are in there. So in that section, when we get to transportation, you'll see the, the language for, you know, staying away from those things. What, what this intention was, when we're seeing the street trees being placed in the planner strips, they tend to be not, not doing it correctly, you know. So, I mean, a, a lot of times I'll put a street tree and not think about, well, the crown of the tree is going to grow and it's going to block out the street, street light. In fact, right now I have twenty-three trees that I'm reviewing with Jubilee on taking them out and probably not replacing them because they're blocking street lighting. And so I've asked them to take pictures to show me that. And then if that's the case, then we're just going to approve not replacing them, you know, so, um, so, yeah.
Yeah, and, and I'll just reiterate that this is a checklist that gives some basic parameters around what they are looking at when they review the plans. We will, once we get, like Tom said, get to the transportation section of the, of the public work standards. It will have exactly what species, how big of a tree, where it should be planted and, and the depth that should be planted at and all the technical specifications of planting a street tree will be in there. So this is really just very high level at this point, just kind of giving them an idea of what we're going to be looking at when we review the plans, right?
Pretty first, thank you.
Okay, Dale, Elliot?
Um, I was wondering about historical references, you know, like an example, it might be Pacific and Lacey Boulevard. You, or Carpenter, where the old Safeway, the Safeway has a historical reference in there. I haven't seen any historical references in here, not that Lacey has a lot, but.
You mean for the, on the checklist or?
On the checklist, yes.
Yeah, we don't, I mean, that might be something that's missing, you know. We don't, like for a civil plan review, we're not usually, we're just trying to get the utilities in place, the fringe improvements in place. How that is incorporated into the project would probably be more as a site plan review condition. Like if, like going back, I was here for the Safeway. We worked with Shirley Jasek and she was involved with the school district at the time. And she worked for us to get the, the bricks onto the building from the old school that was there that I played basketball in. Anyway, um, yeah, it was, we, we, we might be lacking in that. But usually on the, the civil part, there's not a lot that we're addressing. But it comes through the site plan review and I'm, I'm looking at Ryan to like, yeah.
Yeah, that's something that more kind of along the lines of what the planners do when they're looking at evaluating sites for, you know, historic purposes and stuff like that. If there are things that are identified, then what happens is, so, so for civil engineering plan and, and I'll say a building permit, you know, in the, in the scheme of development, those are towards, I'll say kind of the middle point or even the endpoint, you know, as you're, as you're ready to pull your permits into your construction. There is a, a whole nother process that happens before that that sets basically all of the, the conditions of approval around the development. It says you have to do, you know, X, Y, and Z. And, and that's really where that, those conditions of approval come into play, like, you know, any kind of historic preservation requirements and those kinds of things. So it's not the land use approval stage.
And completely in the stage, if it was some significant.
That actually is at the beginning of this. Yeah, yep, yep.
Same for the trees as well.
So for any, well, uh, when you say trees, I'll, I'll say yes in terms of trees that are protected on the site. For things like street trees or those things that are new and planted, those things are identified on like civil engineering drawings, which is a little later in the stage, right?
So to go back, like if in the site plan review approval or land use approval, part of the, the, the project, if there was something that needed to be shown on the civil drawings, then that would come up in that letter. So every time we do a project, then one of the things we're doing is we go through the site plan review approval letter to make sure all those conditions. So let's say you, one of the things was you need to build a, you know, fire pit out of the bricks. Then we would look for that on the plans to make sure that's shown, you know, to say, oh, yep, there it is, you know. So, but the condition for it would be written in the, the land use approval, so.
I was curious, this could just be my ignorance, but a lot of references to paper documents, pieces, you know, PDFs, signatures and things like that, is, is this business not electronic yet? But like, we're not looking at this online?
We are not up to speed as our community and economic, community, community and economic development department. We are moving that way. So in fact, this year what we did is we worked on a joint filing system for electronic filing. The one thing that we really don't want to see go electronic is our civil plans because it's so hard to on the screen find everything. So we are actually moving that way. So, but this version doesn't have the requirement for everything to be electronic yet. So, but that could be, you know, that might be something that comes out and you goes like, we really want to see everything electronic, you know, and move that way.
Well, and you could obviously have larger monitors to make things more visible and stuff rather than a standard sized monitor. So, but it just seemed like a, a glaring like, wow, all this in papers.
Yeah. I'll tell you, my experience has been that the, the technology for producing drawings has been very, very slow to adapt to electronics. And a lot of that does have to do with what Tom said, is readability.
Yep.
Being able to find something on, yeah.
And but getting the dimensions right as well.
Right, yeah.
Like what I've always talked about, what I'd love to see, and I'm sure it exists now, is like an iPad, but it's twenty-four by thirty-six that you can write on and, and or whatever, um, and flip the pages. But what we do, we do have big monitors, but even on that, you're still moving around to find. Yeah, well, just to find everything on, it doesn't, still doesn't fit on the sheet when we're looking at it. So, but the other stuff like, you know, and we're not requiring like, um, like everything to be paper. Like today I got some, uh, a bill of sale and a power of trade for annexation. It was all just electronic. So we're not saying you have to do paper, you know, but, but yeah.
I would, I would expect when the technology gets to the point where you can produce a drawing with digital markers for every design element, that then it'll become more widely adopted, you know.
Probably close, but it could be cost prohibitive, I understand that, but yeah.
Judy?
Um, I have a process comment. So I reviewed the document as it was presented to us and found a great deal of value in your commentary. You really brought it to life more, made it more understandable for me and to see the practical intentions of this. I saw a lot of value in seeing track changes on the screen, which didn't show up in the version that we had to review. I don't know if that was intentional, that we see it clean without changes. I liked seeing what was changing revealed when you went through your presentation.
Yeah.
Is that something that we can have?
Yes, that, that was a mistake, that was probably a mistake on my part because I thought I had it, you know, with the track changes, but again, I probably.
I thought it was a matter of the way it was put into our packet, so it, it can be sent to us in track changes.
Yeah.
I'll get it from Tom and I'll send it to you.
Yeah, I, I, I found that, and I know it's a fresh eye for everything we're looking at, but I like seeing what were the intended changes and then see it in context, so.
Yeah.
So what we'll do is we'll make sure, we'll email you out the track changes of this version. And then for future versions, we'll make sure that the track changes are.
That's great.
That was a.
Good point.
And then one follow up question, if I can, on what was said.
After Tanya has a chance, okay?
If so much is paper, as Daphne pointed out, that kind of struck me as well because my entire work life is platformed, I don't have paper in my work life. Um, how is, how do you accommodate collaboration for all the stakeholders in this? If so much is paper based?
Yeah, that's, that's an easy one. We do a lot of Blue Beam. So like in, like today, we're doing a review of environmental assessment for Quimeth Village, right? So we got all the documentation and I sent out a Blue Beam session to the stakeholders and they will be on their writing notes in Blue Beam.
Okay.
So we do a lot of that.
That's great, thank you.
True.
And then all the, the paper plans, I'll just say to you are, you know, you, you have a, a plan hold where, you know, those things are, are put so people can pick them up, take a look at them, it's like a library, right? So there, there's other ways to do that as well.
Yeah, we have it like, there's, the old school people are becoming less and less. And so, but there's still old school people that they want to, you know, go grab the, the drawings out of the, the plan hold and flip through them and, and it's easier, also another thing is comparing things, it's easier too, so.
Did I see your hand come up, Elliot?
No, you, you mentioned old people there.
Is anybody else?
This is just a very small comment, but I just want to say, I, we had an experience personally with the City of Lacey and our Step Sewer and they were amazing, they were so prompt, it was on the weekend, so prompt. Gave me a little education about that alarm, what I'm supposed to do and not supposed to do on that alarm. And so just a shout out to, uh, to a, a great City of Lacey employee that really did a good job with his customers.
Well, they'll be, like when we do sewer, like the other thing is, I usually will bring, I am, another thing is, I am not the expert on any of this stuff. What I am just basically the person that tries to get their information into this document. So as we go to the different sections, you'll see other people with me. And when sewer comes up, you're going to get a couple of guys from sewer that are.
Great. He was great, he's one guy, they were great, so.
Does anybody have any more questions? All right, well, thank you both for being here, it's good to see you again, Tom.
Good to see you guys.
Brought it to life for me.
Yeah. It's a bit costly.
All right, thank you, thank you guys.
Thank you.
So before we move it right, I, I want to step back to where we were talking about meeting format, just very briefly. One of the other things is if you are coming in remote, please keep your camera on. Um, I think it's important, I get, especially with commission meetings at the county, I get so many comments from people, why isn't that person ever on camera? So.
She told us that in our last meeting too, Elbort, that was, and you all popped up with your cameras.
Yeah, yeah. And the other thing is, these aren't cast in stone, all right? We're a living, breathing commission. If you have any suggestions for how we can improve process, please bring them forward. And if you want to say them privately to me and I'll bring them forward, I'm more than happy to do that, so. All right, Ryan.
Great, thanks, Jeff. Uh, so next on your agenda is a briefing. Uh, so next on your agenda is a briefing that we have for you around some, relatively new legislative requirements that we're reacting to, uh, around hous- housing affordability requirements. So this was, a, a joint project that we worked with together with the, through the TRPC, Thurston Regional Planning Council staff. And I, I wanted to give a, a shout out and thanks to, to their staff. They did a, a great job in putting this all together. This is a, a truly a regional project that was looking at all of our kind of housing allocations, our projections, and then looking at all of our zoning to make sure that we could accommodate all the, the needs of, of the different, economic segments of, of Thurston County. So a big shout out for them. Um, so what I'm going to do is I'm going to go through a little bit about the basics behind the law itself. Um, and then what some of the projections are in terms of the housing needs that are, are needed throughout our community and across Thurston County. And then whether or not the, the Lacey community in, in terms of our zoning can accommodate the type of housing that we need, that's projected for each economic segment. So with that, the, the HB twelve twenty, which was the, the bill that was passed in twenty twenty-one, required jurisdictions to plan for and accommodate housing. So first of all, recognizing that most housing will be built by the private sector, however, the jurisdictions must demonstrate that, uh, we have policies and regulations in place to allow housing affordable to all in our community. And all means all economic segments. So that's moderate, low, very low and extremely low income households, as defined by HUD, which is the Housing and Urban Development Segment of the Federal Government. And that also includes emergency housing, emergency shelters and permanent supportive housing as well. And I'll go through some of those income requirements here in a little bit. You'll notice as far as all economic segments, they did not necessarily say that we had to plan for, the high income segment. So they said all economic strata, but then they said, well, moderate and below. So, um, and you'll see some numbers in here that actually we do also need some high, income housing as well. Uh, and then also included in the bill was some requirements for, uh, addressing racially disparate impacts and displacement. And that's happening through a separate regional process that you'll be briefed on in another date. So let's pull this up here so we can see a little better on our end. So, we're not starting from scratch. As far as these numbers go, we all, we all have throughout our comprehensive plans, um, existing policies. So for us, we have our comprehensive plan, our countywide planning policies, our housing action plans. We have an affordable housing strategy for the City of Lacey. So these new requirements build on our existing work and all of the plans have policies promoting, housing affordability to a range of income, um, across all of our jurisdictions. Uh, what this does is it adds numbers to these plans. So that jurisdictions must identify the number of households in each income range they are planning for, and document that need in our comprehensive plan. And so this is going, this is work that will be put into our comprehensive plan when we update it here and adopt that hopefully by the end of twenty twenty-five. And making sure that we have policies within that, that identifies all the housing needs for all incomes. So who are we planning for? So the House Bill requires that we, plan for seven different incomes. So that is, first of all, emergency shelter. And that's defined as temporary shelter for individuals or families that are currently experiencing homelessness. Uh, emergency housing is temporary accommodation for individuals and families at imminent risk of becoming homeless. Permanent supportive housing is low barrier subsidized housing with supportive services to help tenants maintain housing stability. And then from there, you can see that the income ranges increase above that. Uh, the, and I already mentioned this, but one of the things that the House Bill does not require us to, plan for those earning more than a hundred and twenty percent of the area median, median income. And so you can see all the different income kind of strata throughout here, and those are reflected in certain housing types when we do the, the planning. But one of the things I wanted to just kind of point out is this is for a family of four in Thurston County. Um, and household income, uh, there, just some examples are, uh, if you are, a state government employee, kind of will say a lower mid-level state level, uh, state government employee, you're making about eighty thousand dollars per year. Um, so right now you would be, uh, below the eighty percent AMI limit. Um, if you are in manufacturing, sixty-four thousand. If you are in, let's say, food services or something like that, twenty-seven thousand. Um, so you can see how difficult it is just right off the top for people in, in Thurston County to hit some of these income limits, especially if they are a one income family. So this chart shows the number of housing units affordable to the different income groups that are available. So that means that they are constructed and existing within Thurston County. And numbers in this table are expressed as a percent of the area median income, uh, which was, if you remember the last slide, about a hundred and two thousand five hundred dollars in twenty twenty-three numbers. Uh, currently, there's over a hundred and twenty thousand housing units in Thurston County, uh, forty percent of which are affordable to low income households, and that's eighty percent or below. So forty percent of our, uh, existing housing stock is in this eighty percent or below range here. So that means sixty percent is essentially market rate or above. This is what our housing need actually is. So the blue are the, the available homes or the existing homes, the orange is what is needed. Um, and Thurston Regional Planning Council projects that the county will need to add fifty-four thousand three hundred and fifty-six units in, uh, the next twenty-five years to meet the growing population of the county. Um, and Department of Commerce, when doing this work, provides us with estimates of housing needed by each individual income group. Uh, the need is especially acute for the lowest income households. Uh, you'll see that there's a seventy percent increase in housing for low, uh, or for very low income households. So that is, uh, at kind of this level, so eighty percent and below. A threefold increase in housing for extremely low income households and a twenty-fold increase in permanent supportive housing. So if you see here, the permanent supportive housing line, you barely see the blue, um, is the permanent supportive housing need in our community is twenty times our existing, amount, which let's go back and take a look, a hundred and eighty, and now we're up to thirty-five, thirty-six hundred. So substantial amount of housing that's needed in the next twenty to twenty-five years. And this is all based on population projections. Um, it's allocated to Thurston County through the, through the state. So they, these are fairly, accurate numbers in terms of the, the demand. Not all these houses, not all these will eventually turn into houses, but this is the demand or the need. So, um, Thurston County and, and each city, uh, contracted Thurston Regional Planning Council to facilitate a process and do this data analysis. First of all, they came up with the numbers in terms of the housing need for each jurisdiction. Uh, so how many low income units should each jurisdiction plan for, which I'll provide here in a second. And then second, asked and answered the question about, is there sufficient land to accommodate the low income housing need? Or do we need to change our policies or our zoning to accommodate those lowest incomes, uh, lowest income needs? House Bill twelve twenty allows jurisdictions to determine the housing need they are planning for, but the process is required to be multi-jurisdictional and collaborative. Uh, the jurisdiction needs to sum up to the countywide need. So, uh, all of our, all of our numbers need to fit the hole that are going into the hole of Thurston County. And, um, project partners ask TRPC to accept the recommended allocation. So this is being done through, through TRPC's process. So here is a chart showing the full amount of housing supply that exists between zero to eighty AMI. And, um, the good news is that, um, Lacey has the highest portion of this housing supply throughout Thurston County. So, um, Lacey has about sixteen thousand two hundred and twenty-seven. The next closest is Olympia, which has about a thousand less at fifteen thousand two hundred and forty-seven, of those units. And then, uh, you can see the next one below that would be rural Thurston County. The not so good news, or maybe it's not good or bad, but it, it, it is, um, is that Lacey also has the highest future, um, demand in terms of low income housing need. So we're projecting, uh, nine thousand nine hundred and fifteen additional units between zero and eighty AMI, um, in the next twenty-five years. So our, our need, um, based on our population projections is actually the highest out of all of our neighboring jurisdictions. What you'll notice.
Just a quick clarification, all of the existing numbers are twenty-twenty, is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Yep, yep. Um, one, one thing you'll notice here is that rural Thurston County does not provide any housing, um, between eighty percent and below AMI. And the reason for that is the, when the Department of Commerce, when the state basically established the parameters of this program, they said there are certain housing types that are more affordable than others. And so what they are assuming is the more dense the project is, the more affordable the project will be, or the individual unit within each project will be. So, in theory, the rent is less, the more units you provide. And so, um, while yes, there will be, there is a low income housing need and some of that will be provided in rural Thurston County. The parameters of the exercise given to us by the state of Washington said, if we're going to develop for more affordable housing, those things need to be prioritized in the city because that's where those densities can be increased. And the economics of the situation will support more affordable units. So I just wanted to couch that. Having said that, yes, there will be affordable, there are existing affordable units and there will be more affordable units in Thurston County. But they're going to be more along the lines of maybe farm worker housing or things like accessory dwelling units or those kinds of things, which are, don't necessarily need to be accounted for in, in this exercise. So keep in mind that part of this exercise is purely academic. This is not going to tell you exactly how many units are going to be on the ground in the next twenty to twenty-five years in Thurston County and where they're going to go. It's basically telling us where the demand is the greatest and where we need to do the most how, planning for the most people to come within certain income brackets. So that was the first part. That said, okay, this is how many units you need. The second part, as I mentioned, is kind of this zoning analysis that said, is there enough land in your jurisdiction to accommodate twenty years of population growth? Um, is there enough land to accommodate twenty years of low income housing need? Um, and is zoning, um, and development regulations in general, a barrier to low income housing development in your community? And I'll say, I'm not going to go through each jurisdiction tonight. I'm just going to go through Lacey, but I will say there are jurisdictions that have a deficit. And so we'll need to do, um, some zoning, uh, changes. The good news is that there are no deficits for us here in Lacey. So, um, there are also none in rural unincorporated county, but there are deficits in Tanino, Yelm and Grand Mound, um, urban growth area. And so they will need to do, um, certain zoning, um, adjustments to accommodate for more low income housing types in their jurisdiction.
May I ask a question?
Remember it.
Remember it. That's really a challenge.
It may get answered, so.
So the good news for us is that zoning is not a barrier to affordable housing development in Lacey. And it's shown by this slide right here, which shows our overall housing need. Um, so in that zero to eighty percent, our aggregate need is net nine thousand nine hundred and fifteen units. Our capacity per our existing zoning, so this is zoning as it exists today, not how it may exist in twenty or twenty-five years, says that our capacity is going to be a little over ten thousand. So we have a net or a surplus of about a hundred and seventy-six units. So this academic exercise all pencils out to say that, yes, we have, will have it, a surplus of units in the next twenty to twenty-five years. Um, as far as moderate income, we have even a larger surplus. So this is where we have even more. Um, we have the aggregate need, we have a less need and, um, still a high capacity, which means that we have a surplus of about seven thousand units for the eighty to a hundred and twenty percent that we're also required to plan for. So with that, um, I just wanted to go through next steps, uh, and then turn it over to you to question, for questions. Actually, I'm going to back up a couple of slides. So I, I'm not going to do that right now because it would take me too long. But one, one thing I did want to just mention, and I forgot it on one of the previous slides, is just reemphasizing that there is a significant need at that hundred and twenty percent plus as well. But just as a reminder, we're not required to plan, um, for that. And one of the, one of the, um, findings of this is that basically that, hundred and twenty plus can be accommodated in, in rural Thurston County. So while rural Thurston County is not, is shown to not have much, if any, of the zero to eighty, it's really going to have a bulk of the hundred and twenty plus. So if you want to build a big house out in rural Thurston County, so please do it, I guess. So the next step is that, uh, the partners, so all the jurisdictions and all the cities, county as well, will ask TRPC to approve, uh, this, the housing need allocations, which will be done in November, December. And then we will take this work and integrate it into our housing element of our comprehensive plan. Uh, we already have policies regarding housing affordability and, and those kinds of things. We don't necessarily need to do anything as a result of this exercise, but we already have. We've done a lot of this planning. In fact, you know, housing planning is a lot of what we've done over the last, uh, eight years. And then within urban growth areas, uh, cities and county can consider where low income housing is the most appropriate. So a part of this exercise as well is to, you know, determine, okay, what, what areas, if any, of our urban growth area should contain more, for example, permanent supportive housing and those kinds of things. Those seem to be things that are provided for in more of our city cores. Uh, but there's certainly a need for that in our urban growth areas as well. So. With that, that was the end of the slideshow. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Hey, we'll start with Gail.
Um, when you say we have in, in Lacey and the urban growth area sufficient, land to, to construct these many academic housing units. The last time we went to the County Planning Commission, we were, asking to build more housing on available lots in the UGA. Um, it seems to me that even if we do have available space and that, that particular zoning restriction holds in the UGA, we're planning to build essentially central city rabbit warrants and nice houses in the countryside around. And I don't know. I mean, I think to most citizens who have to negotiate the center city or the transport within it, I, I, I think that might turn to be unacceptable. It's not really a question, but it's a, it's a question about what do we do about zoning in the UGA? Because we, we, you know, we ran our heads into that brick wall a year ago.
Yeah. You, you make a really good point. And, um, part of this, again, just getting back to kind of the parameters that the state gave us, said that, certain housing types are going to only exist in certain areas and didn't give us a lot of flexibility for where those can go. Um, so there was some limitations there. And I, I, I think as well that some of this work comes from, they're not necessarily picking on Lacey when they said, when the legislature said, hey, we, we need to do this. They're, they're picking on, you know, some other suburban King County cities that have said, we only want single family zoning and that's all we're going to have, period, and forget about it. There, the state is now saying you can't. You have to, if population is coming, you have to plan for that. And you have to make sure that the zoning accommodates that in your city and you can't just wall it off. So I think really what it gets down to is that's the intent. There's certain, bad actors that the legislature has seen like, hey, we want to really focus on some of these things because we see, some warning signals that not everybody is welcome, not all housing types are being built, those kinds of things. So.
Elliot?
Gail, in a runabout way, asked the same question. And then I was looking at the, they were projected for twenty forty-five from twenty, twenty, uh, five thousand more units, but we're, we're four years into the twenty twenty consensus. Is, is that still on projection? Because it seemed pretty low for five thousand units by twenty forty-five. From the twenty-three oh four-two to the twenty-eight one ninety-six.
Sorry, talking specifically about Lacey?
Yes, that's what involves us.
So five, five thousand units total in the next.
Five thousand units totaled by twenty forty-five.
Yeah, I mean, we're.
We're already, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-four, we're already around in those four years.
You're correct.
And looking at this, the census, we've grown quite a bit.
We have. And so one of the things that we're actually getting ready to sign a contract with is a consultant that can help us update some of our population projections because we've grown so fast in the last three or four years. That i- if we can't operate on twenty twenty assumptions, we have to actually know what we're working with today. And so when we get to our comprehensive plan, we're going to have brand new numbers to work from. Because I, I agree. I think some of those numbers are already behind the times.
Yeah. The, the state tends to move at a glacial pace. You've noticed that. Daphne?
I have a few, but I'll only ask one now. But I, so I want to build on, I think where Gail is going, and I want to channel a little bit of Mark Meineger, who often. Mark Meineger, who often talked about attracting the right kind of business. I understand with this house bill. That we're not dealing with a hundred and twenty percent AMI. But we are not going to attract the businesses we need for future growth of Lacey if we don't attract high income. Companies or companies with high incomes, we don't attract those businesses. So, so I, I, it feels cautionary that. While I completely understand the need for the lower income housing, we are going to build ourselves into a hole and not have the businesses to. Support those people living in the housing and they're gonna be traveling the interstate or not having jobs and we're gonna perpetuate a situation. I think it, I think it could just be a really downward spiral if we don't keep. Attracting the businesses that have high income and not just service industries where we're paying minimum wage. And clearly not a living wage if you have a family of four. So I, it just, it, it seems we can't send them all in county. Or we're not gonna get anywhere, so.
That was exactly my thought. That we can't build ourselves into this. We've got, it's gotta be balanced. Judy?
Yes, a question. You recently shared with us right in a previous meeting. That the description of Maple Court changed after they hit the one-year mark and maybe recognized. Differently the needs. How does that change in Maple Court going from temporary support to. Permanent support factor into this?
Yeah, good question. So. Maple Court hasn't formally changed, but the idea with Maple Court is that it will change at some point in the future. So it'll go from. The emergency shelter, actually, there's another category, emergency housing. Into the permanent supportive housing category. And so what it will do is on the amount of. Units provided, it'll shift from the emergency housing category into the permanent supportive housing category. So it'll actually. Go from, it'll be taken out, so you know, part of it will go down and then permanent supportive housing would actually go up.
Okay, and with that formal change, because right now it's still adults, I think, single adults, maybe. Does the definition of who's allowed to use that as its new definition change? Would that go with the, are they linked in any way on how you're allowed to define what's?
I'm not, I'm not exactly sure because we've not had permanent supportive housing in our community to this level before. This amount of people, I think we have permanent supportive housing probably in some small, you know, clusters around the city, but not to this. Level with.
It's over a hundred, right?
Yeah, yeah, it's a hundred and twenty to thirty, a hundred and thirty people. And so, and, and, you know, it has onsite management, all that kind of stuff. So. This is would be really new territory. Those things would have to be kind of worked out as we, you know, worked with. Lehigh, the operator Low Income Housing Institute to kind of develop the, the codes and regulations and, you know. Code of Conduct in that, in that facility to see who would live there and under what circumstances. Could they have visitors? Could they have family? Could they, you know, all those things, so. At this point, it's a, it's a bit of an unknown. There is no, so it, it would need, we would need a lot of money. We, the state would need to put in a lot of money into that project to convert it to permanent supportive housing, things like. Kitchens and other facilities that are needed in there to actually be kind of more apartment, many apartments than they are now, which is still kind of the hotel rooms.
They just bring the food in now? They just bring it in?
Correct, right, right. There's a, there's a kitchen that's in the bottom of it, but it's kind of a warming, reheat type thing. They're not cooking full meals there. And so it would need to be, you know, the substantial premise that building so that people could live there permanently.
So that's another big decision on the horizon.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You kind of already answered my question because I wanted to know what exactly permanent supportive housing looked like.
Yeah. Yeah, and so permanent supportive housing is really, it, it still would have, you know, onsite staff and support. It's gonna be more. Kind of self-sufficient, people that can, you know, more independent living. So they're gonna be able to, you know, cook and clean and those kinds of things and, and. You know, it, chances are it's, it's gonna have a little bit more rigidity to the structure than. The current, for example, enhanced shelter at Maple Court.
Are you familiar with Unity Commons?
No.
On Martin Way?
No.
So those are very, very small studios. There's a bed, a mini kitchen. You know, you, storage facilities for your clothes and then they have a central laundry area for the, the entire building.
Where is that?
Uh, corner of Martin Way and Patterson. They're building the second building now. It's really cool. And then in the main floor, the, the first floor is where all of the support services are. It's really cool.
The kitty quarter from inner city transit.
Spencer?
So was the numbers presented for the AMI based on the thirty percent rule for cost burdens?
No, it's based on. Basically, it's based on the, just the income levels based on a family of four. So it's going, you know, thirty percent AMI is gonna be thirty percent of whatever it was, eighty-two thousand dollars.
Yeah, so, so when, when they're predicting the housing need for that eighty thousand, they're using the thirty percent rule. That you shouldn't be more than thirty percent on your rent and mortgage, whatever that is.
Yeah, correct, so that you're not house burdened, yeah.
Got it, okay. And then, correct me if I'm wrong, but I saw in the packet where it said that. And this is confirmed by me driving around the city all the time, is the bulk of the housing being built currently seems to be in the. Four fifty plus range, which would fit that one twenty to one twenty and above AMI. Can you confirm that or am I off bases there?
Oh, you're, you're a hundred, a hundred percent on. I think the, you know, the only thing is if you really look at the numbers. We are a little different than Olympia and Tumwater in that we provide more of the strata between eighty and a hundred and twenty. And I think the reason is, is especially because of, you know, the buildup of the, the single family market from. You know, I'll say from early two thousands to today. I think if you look where the bulk of the new construction during that time has happened, it's been in within. Lacey versus Tumwater and Olympia. Olympia's been relatively stagnant in terms of new home construction outside of downtown. I think Tumwater is a little different. Tumwater is just kind of coming up right now. And so a lot of that market rate that has been provided by Lacey, that eighty to a hundred and twenty over the last twenty years. But like you mentioned, Spencer, the stuff that's coming out of the ground now is gonna be the stuff that's a hundred and twenty percent and above. Regardless if it's for sale, you know, homeownership opportunities or, you know, rental opportunities as well. You know, rents anywhere for a studio in Lacey, what, you know, we're hearing is, you know, fourteen hundred dollars a month to. A one-bedroom, eighteen hundred dollars a month to a two-bedroom, twenty-two hundred dollars a month for an apartment.
Yeah. Well, I, I, I'm sorry.
You gotta remember Olympia is a lot closer under their, under current zoning, Olympia is a lot closer to being completely built out than Lacey is.
And I, I would definitely agree with that. I just wanted to think about that in the context of like. A comment that was made earlier where we were pushing all of the higher AMIs out into the countryside. Because that's not what I'm seeing being developed currently. So I feel confident that. Enacting these plans with this idea is gonna yield a more balanced result of people in the community than. A lot of people living out in Thurston County with multi-acre plots and, and really expensive homes. It seems like the distribution is fine.
It's gonna be a good discussion.
I'll, I'll say one other thing to add to that is that anything that's gonna be eighty percent or below AMI is going to be something that. The private sector is not going to provide. So, you know, it's going to have to be something that is subsidized and built by a nonprofit builder or something like that. So, you know, any, so that demand is so high. Good news is that, you know, the zoning doesn't preclude us from doing it. The, the bad news is, is that that's not something that's being provided by. The private market nor will probably ever be anytime in the future.
Judy?
Yeah, I was looking at one of the other pages where it was saying potentially ADU lots are close to three thousand. Of the projected units for Lacey, but I was wondering about those ones. I know when. I think that was right before pandemic, we had the big open house and they were saying that it was about two hundred thousand to build an ADU. And wondering what price range those three thousand units were going into and if that was something that would be. Comparative to reaching the, the goal.
I'm gonna have to look into what income level ADUs were classified as, but I don't think they were below eighty percent. And, you know, everything that we're hearing is that, you know, the per square footage cost is. As high or higher than building a regular stick frame house, right? And then they're renting out for, you know, as much or more than apartments. So let me look into that, that, you know, see, to see what income level an ADU was, was put at. But I can pretty much guarantee it wasn't anything below eighty percent.
My question, you, you mentioned that, you know, they're counting the units countywide. So where is the nexus? Who's, is that the Regional Housing Council? Where the coordination is taking place or, or what?
Say that again.
So you, you mentioned that the, it's gotta be a county-wide coordination on getting these units built. And we know what Lacey's share is, but. That's gotta be, there's gotta be a central point where everybody is actually coordinating. Is that the Regional Housing Council?
It's actually through Thurston Regional Planning Council as, as part of this effort. And then, you know, as part of our comprehensive plan updates, we have to make sure that. We are including this information into our own call plan, so we can't be any different from what this report provides in terms of our. Housing projections and our, our zoning analysis. So this is really the pivot point. This, this process and Thurston Regional Planning Council is actually the, you know, the pivot point in that whole process. So. The Regional Housing Council is a little different. The Regional Housing Council, in my, in my mind, has two major thrusts. Number one, they provide. Funding for people that do build affordable units. So, you know, they're gonna be, you know, a fantastic tool in terms of. Funding projects that are eighty percent below AMI. And that's something that our taxes pay into and that we support that way. The other thing is that they provide kind of policy support. So again, you know, we, we have a lot of. Existing policies in our, in our codes or in our, in our plans that say, hey, we gotta. Make sure we're, we're planning for all segments of our population, housing for all segments of our population, providing, you know, places for people to work and do all those things. They, they'll be able to support those policies as well. But the main thing with, with the RHC is gonna be the, the funding support that they can provide.
Okay, so I'm gonna go Gail, Daphne, and then Spencer. You each had additional.
Yeah, I just, I just am. Astounded really that. I don't understand why the counties as a whole. Have not gone back to the legislature and said. Very nice. Thank you so much for telling us all these people are coming, but you've also passed all these regulations to make housing, building housings more expensive. And nobody's building affordable housing because it doesn't pay.
So the counties and the cities did, they were. This last legislative session, they were extremely vocal. And the legislature said, this is what we're gonna do.
Yeah, so, and, and it's, it's really interesting. You have a dynamic right now and we'll see how it plays out in this next legis. Legislative session that you have, you know, kind of the housing side, that they're, they're part of the same party. But you have that, the housing side of the aisle and you have the environmental side of the aisle. So you have the, the housing side of the aisle that's saying, hey, we need to do whatever we can do to, you know, increase the amount of housing, make it more affordable, put more restrictions on cities. So that they can't limit affordable housing, all those things. But at the same time, you have the same party that's also the, the party that's in power that's also saying. But it's really important that we reduce greenhouse gas emissions and that we have some of the most restrictive energy codes in, in the country. And those kinds of things that also push up our housing costs. And so it, it, there's not a lot of coordination. At the legislative level to make sure that these things are kind of balanced and that, you know, we're not. Pushing and pulling on these different things. And right now you have, I'll say the, kind of the climate side and the housing side that are doing a little bit of this and. And, and it's unfortunate. And the cities are bearing the brunt of that because we're. Having to adopt the new energy codes and enforce the new energy codes, but then at the also time. At the same time, accommodate all the, the, the housing and, and all that stuff and do all the, the planning work and the, those kinds of things. And so. The cities in general feel that we're kind of stuck and we've been telling the legislature that and that they, one side says, well. Housing is really important to us. The other side says, well, climate is really important to us and cities are kind of stuck in the middle.
I wanna go back and, and it just, I may have missed it. The, the original slide you had Ryan where it had like temporary emergency housing, emergency housing. And it seemed like I saw that we switched to permanent supportive housing. Was that part of the house bill also? Did I just miss that line text?
So we have emergency shelter, emergency housing, permanent supportive housing.
I just missed it, that one, okay.
Yeah.
Does that have to be my question? Because I have a really morbid, that was just more. Like, all I needed was just, I like, could you just go back? So sometimes these questions for, I guess for a point of order, sometimes the questions are just. Administrative and like literally me waiting for fifteen minutes just to ask a really, like, how did we such a, I just missed it on the slide.
Yeah.
So maybe we can think about those, like.
We can't, we can't think about those.
administrative question.
This is part of that tweaking that I was talking about because, yeah, the, the problem is when one of you raises your hands, I have no idea if it's. Point of clarification or if it's gonna be a question that requires a ten-minute answer.
Well, that's on us that we need to ask. If I just have a quick question, could you just go back a slide? I need to look, how did we jump to a permanent supportive housing? I just missed it. Can I ask a real question now?
Yes.
So this keeps going back to some of the, you know, all of the, all of the questions and everybody, right? And, and Ryan, you're saying zoning doesn't preclude us from doing some of these things. So house bill's saying we have to zone for it and allow for it. But if I own this land and I wanna build this nice expensive apartment, we're not being told we have to stop it, correct?
Yep, absolutely.
So, and I, if you said that, I just needed it more succinctly in my mind, so. As long as our zoning. We're good on our zoning, we're allowing for this, then we can let market forces bring in whatever breaks in to Lacey and.
That's why, again, getting back to, you know, some of the original statements I made was this is a highly academic exercise that, that, you know, that. It's has very limited application on the ground. Because there are things like market factors and other things that play into this. You know, realities of geographic limitations, transit limit, transportation limitations, those kinds of things that, you know. Weren't factored into this. This was really a. What are the numbers and will the zoning allow for those types of numbers across those different income strata? Yes, then we've checked the box, we're done.
Community for us in any way.
And all of our policies will, they currently support and they will in the future in our housing element update, support economic, you know. Opportunities for all community members, housing opportunities for all community members. And, you know, we'll focus on things like, you know, supporting the Regional Housing Council for funding opportunities for lower income. Housing options and those kinds of things. So we'll, we'll be good. It's, it's just, again, hard sometimes to kind of wrap your brain around this being. Such an academic exercise and not something that's applicable. Because I think that's. Kind of the world we all live in is like, well, what does this mean in the real world? Well, sometimes it's like, well, the, the state made us do it, so we did it. Move on.
Spencer? You're good. Judy?
Daphne inspired another question.
Oh, boy.
When you talked about bringing in the nice apartments and, and the desirable locations and that. I'm reminded of the massive yellow crane. That was, it's in an abandoned, like we talked about it a couple of meetings ago, that it was, I guess, left by the developer. And it was intended to be removed.
Yeah, let me check on that for you.
I actually got a message today from our Lacey Works system. I, I sent it to Terry McDaniel, who's our new building official, and he actually said. He's in constant communication with them. They're trying to get everything ready for it. It's staying for now, but it's been inspected and it's okay to stay. Until they, they're not either going forward or they can't.
It's great information because the, the concern that I hear from people that go up and down. Safety all the time is safety because it's about to get very windy for the next couple of months.
It has been inspected for safety. It is A-OK to stay there and they're very, very vocal and in constant communication with Terry like once a week, I think. Like, to, to talk about what's going on with that.
It's you and your new role, boy. It just happened to be today.
They have got to be paying an incredible lease on that every month.
I've got to think so.
Wow.
I, I was really curious because. You said that. Builders aren't building anything for the eighty percent and below. And I was. Gonna ask a second question of how are you gonna provide the four thousand units for the zero to thirty percent in Lacey? And, but now I'm curious, are there government subsidies that would cover the nine thousand from zero to eighty percent? To subsidize. Construction or is there like certain grants or allotments at different levels or?
Yeah, and, and a lot of this, some of this is outside of my bailiwick, but there's like the Washington State Housing Finance Commission gives. Housing, they give kind of low or no interest loans to low-income housing developers building projects. And there are income limitations when they. Do a project and basically the more or the less income people make, the more benefit that they get. And so there are programs. Um, and so there are programs and things that are above. So, so the city of Lacey really has very limited tools in place. We don't have the funding to be able to give people a lot of money. We have some fee waiver things and some of those things that allowed people to buy down the cost of their project. A little bit, but we don't have those kind of like, you know, big, we can't give people loans. We can't give them those kinds of things. So that's really done by the state. Or maybe through our regional housing council. And so there are, um, basically, you know, benefits that the lower income you go, the, the more benefit. You get as a, as a developer to build those projects.
And, and our duty is to ensure that we provide capacity.
Correct.
We don't have to actually provide the housing.
That's right.
Thank you for coming. Listen, if you have any questions or comments, just email Ryan and he'll make sure they get to us.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you for being here. Judy or Daphne, sorry.
So it's, again, you're, we're an academic or an academic argument kinda thing, but just, I wanna throw it out. Could it be considered zoned for it? Um, we're thinking all rent, rent, rent. That is my rent within, you know, whatever the AMI is. Or something like that. But there are like, you know, I pass a manufactured home is sales side and they're gonna say this brand new manufactured home is sixty-nine thousand dollars. And maybe in rural Thurston County, I can buy a plot of land for, you know, and I could get a loan for a hundred thousand dollars to, you know, get my sewer and my electric. And, and or well or whatever I've got there and I could have a mortgage payment that is within that. Is, is that considered in any way on this? You know, because there are, there, you know, uh, there are down payments that can be prohibitive and things like that. But there are tiny homes, rural land that's not as expensive, maybe that, you know, is there anything to talking about? Maybe zoning such that people could buy a small plot of land, build a small home and possibly have a mortgage they can afford. That is frankly gonna be less than the rent.
Uh, in this, um, exercise, there is, that, that is a reality that exists within the community. Within this exercise, it says, things that are single family in nature, detached structures really only apply to eighty percent and above. So it really is the market rate, you know, single family. But there are options for people to go buy something, move it, you know, and, and develop it. Or cheap, you know, cheaper, uh, more affordable. But those things, basically what they're saying is things like. Duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, apartment complexes, basically as, as you jump up the scale. In, in the minds of the state, the more affordable that unit gets because you're able to accommodate for more of those. So really, when you're seeing this exercise, it's saying. Um, the more affordable is going to be provided at the more units you provide. So that single structure that you're talking about is. There's, even though you could make it affordable, as far as this exercise goes, it's not considered an affordable unit.
Okay, okay.
But it may in the future.
It's just, you know, you can, I don't know what it costs to build a tiny home into the ADUs, but those were pretty decent square footage on those and things like that. But a tiny home on a small, small plot of.
I was trying to get to the Department of Commerce website, but it's totally down. Um, and, and if you're interested, maybe I'll follow up with an email on this. Just to show you what they considered at each economic strata as being that the housing type that's allowed. And, and what you'll see is really those that are more high density are those that are gonna be supported at the lower income range. Which isn't gonna be allowed on a well or a septic. Those are gonna have to go into an urban area, into a city or UGA. So I'll, I'll follow up with a gra- I think they have a graphic or two that, um, it, I'm not sure if it's in the report or not. Um, but that would be helpful to kinda demonstrate that. If it's in the report, I might be able to pull it up. Was it?
Yeah, but I didn't understand some of, well, I don't know if that's what is, what was permitted and what was.
So those were all of our different zones. So they went through a, an exercise to look at every zone in Olympia, Lacey, Tumwater, et cetera. And came up with kind of what's allowed by zone and what's not. So what I'm actually looking for is a, a graphic, which I don't see in there. It actually shows drawings of each housing type and what income each one is associated with.
Yeah, if you get that through Spencer, you get your head up. Yes, you do.
I think it's just the.
It might be the curse.
That's, oh, there's the cursor. Oh, weird, okay. My mistake.
I was gonna say, I never pushed it.
Well, it's weird, cause the cursor is showing a hand right about that same spot, so.
Make it look like a lot of other things too.
All right.
Done, I got my list.
More to come. Thank you. We will see each other again on October the ninth. Thank you all very much. We are starting down, I saw the planning board yesterday for doing this comprehensive plan. We're, we're in baby steps, people. So, thank you very much.
Schedule, that's the update, just look at, okay.